Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee King.
Here.
Trustee Marquez.
Here.
Vice President Weekly.
President.
President Wells.
Here.
Right. Yes, we did roll call. Oral communication, great. Wait, do I do? Okay, we're put on closed session. The board discussed the Superdive's performance and no action was taken. Okay, then good welcome. Good evening. It's the April sixteenth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Redwood City School District Governing Board. Bienvenidos. Si requieren interpretación en español, por favor llame nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete. Y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno. El signo de numero. Si es este a la reunión en persona solicite un transmisor situado al fondo de la sala. Again, welcome. All members of the public are our partners in education and the board encourages you to participate and provide comments on issues of concern, regardless of whether they are on the agenda to speak. You know, please complete a speaker's card. See, many of you have done this already. You're in person, they're available in the back at the entrance. And you can hand them down. Evelyn, or if you're online and attending via Zoom, there's a sheet online that you can fill it out. If you're addressing a subject listed on the agenda, you'll be called at the time that the item is being considered. And if the issue is not on the agenda, you'll be called shortly during our oral communications agenda item. And then to be fair to all speakers, we limit public comments to three minutes per person, per topic, unless otherwise noted. It does look like we're going to have a large number of speakers here. And so our, you know, I'll just follow our board policy for setting what the per speaker limit is based upon that. Let's see, changes to the agenda. Does anyone have changes to the agenda? No, okay, then let's move on to approval of the agenda. We'll need a vote, an action item.
Seven.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. We'll move on to oral communication. We have clear policy. Just checking online really fast to see if there's any here. Okay, so there's one online. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, so we have nine public speakers, so we'll go with our zero to ten, one to ten, three minutes each. And I will point out that because we're allocating three minutes per speaker, if there are late arriving speaker cards, we could take one more, but then we'll hit ten and we're going to keep our time capped to that amount of speakers. And so going, I'm going to take the in-person speakers first and then I'll move to online. And so we're going to move on to Fenbar Rafferty. Yeah, and then. Yeah, thank you, Megan.
Hi, my name is Fenbar. Hi, my name is Fenbar. I'm a third grade, I'm a third grade student at Orion. I would love, I would love the school to have more advanced classes because I think they are so. And I got into North Star Square really hard. I wanted to stay at Orion because I think it's a really great school for me. But sometimes I get really bored and distracted. I have a disability and sometimes I have, sometimes it's really hard for me to get along. Sometimes I think I'm not good at school, but this year my mom signed me up for paleo anthropology at Arizona State University. It's a first year online college class. It was really fun. Learning about the evolution of osteopathesins. Osteopathesins, like Lucy, who was discovered by Donald Johnson's three point two million years ago. She lived three point two million years ago. She was the first bipedal hominid. Later, the osteopathesins developed into robust, robust species. Like Boisia, he was discovered in Old Abay Gorge in Kenya. Boisia had bigger teeth, bigger temporalis muscles and bigger jaw. He also had a sagittal crest, had a pronastic face, and they called him Nutcracker Man because he had to crack nuts and tubers and process all his food with his teeth. Unlike the later Homo species, who probably learned to use fire and process food, which is for the bigger bulb and brain case. After osteopathesins, we evolved, we evolved into Homo habilis, which means two omega. Actually, that's the main feature of the whole Homo genus, creativity and tool use. Then, then even found remains of a huge wooden structure made by Homo erectus five thousand years ago. Homo, everywhere Homo was found, they also found small Odawan tools that were like pebbles or actually enhanced hand axes. Within the upper Paleolithic period, they made harpoons and outladders. Anyway, I could go on and on. The class was great and my mother never had to nag me to finish my homework. This class was the first time I felt challenged learning something before. It was, but it was just really fun. I wish all my classes could be like that. I felt bad because in school I get distracted all the time. I have a behavior plan. I get reminders from the teacher to stay on track because I hear things, because I hear things I know and I get distracted thinking about something else. I wish I could have some, I could have more challenges in the school because I'd be a lot happier.
Thank, thank you, Fenbar, for, and for sharing all that information with us. Our next speaker is Megan O'Reilly Green.
Hey, thank you. Hello, Redwood City trustees. At the last board meeting, eight students came before the board and spoke about their experiences being educated in public school. And they advocated for a middle school curriculum that continues the stellar academic challenges and differentiation that had been receiving at Orion School. There was coverage in the local paper about the students advocacy and Mr. Quintana explained in the article that the district's thinking is that the curriculum is sufficiently challenging for all students to continue to make progress and that the district is following conventions set by the Sequoia Union High School District. However, students have determined that these streamlined courses are not sufficient for students already scoring an eighth grade level prior to middle school. And furthermore, Sequoia Union High School District has eliminated first year's honors courses, but they're actually adding more AP and IB courses at higher grade levels with the intention to increase rates of participation for marginalized students and provide those challenges. Following this student movement, parents responded by asking the district to reconsider school board policy, five thousand one hundred and twenty-three, which addresses acceleration retention. We asked the district, consider research that overwhelmingly supports acceleration as a successful academic intervention for students that have high intellectual processing speeds. I think gifted is a really terrible term. I think off the norm or under the tail is much better, but we are stuck with gifted and I disagree, but I digress. But I would ask that this student designation be considered as a special need like others in the district. And we're asking the school board change this policy to provide explicit support for acceleration for these students. The district has experience with acceleration. There are twenty forms of acceleration that meet the needs of high flyers, offering a compacted curriculum as one. The wind blocks developed at Henry Ford and that have spread to Orion School. That's another form of acceleration. And we would like the board to lean into this and learn from the research around this issue in order to figure out the best way to serve the many nuanced and highly individual needs of students in this district and actively construct programs that are attractive at all community school sites that retain high earning families and high achieving students in order to create more economically integrated schools within the district. The drawbacks of keeping things status quo are that community schools and schools of choice that don't offer acceleration will continue to try to our thriving private school industry or the only school in the district with the availability of acceleration. Redwood City's poverty rate stands at six point two percent, which is well below the national average. And you would not be able to tell this by looking at most of our demographics, the demographics of our school sites. The students in the parent group are making strong calls for the reinstatement of honors courses that used to exist at Kennedy. This is a complex and nuanced issue that deserves a complex and nuanced resolution. And it's not something I'm addressing at this time due to time constraints. But I will say that they ask for reinstatement of advanced classes at Kennedy would not have arisen without the support from the school site and a principal who we believe knows her student body the best. I don't support systems and policies that lower the bar expectations for marginalized students or tracks them into an undesirable future that they can't escape from. I do believe that school systems can serve those with deep needs as well as high flyers on the same school site. And I believe that Redwood City has a large untapped resource in creating programs that over time retain public schools too.
Thank you, Megan. Yeah, I have to cut you off, but, but thank you, thank you very much. And we did receive your email as well. Okay, great. And the next speaker is Saoirse.
Hello, my name is Saoirse. I will be going to Kennedy next year and I would like the school board to consider adding the availa- the, the availability of acceleration at Kennedy Middle School. There's this prevailing idea that kids that are bright will do well no matter what, no matter what experience or, or no matter what environment or curriculum you expose them to. I know that this is not true from experience. In first grade, I was really behind in all subjects. I really did not know how to learn. It was Orion, Winnie and Chen Lao Shi that taught me how to excel. It took me time to learn how to engage with the material correctly so that I retained the information. It took a lot of practice and dedication and honestly, it was just a lot of hard work. These earliest experiences still stick with me. I know what it's like to feel lost or to feel like everyone else knows something that I don't know and is doing better. I also know, I, I also know that advancement is achievable for all students. And what it takes is being willing to put the work in and work in to achieve success and have options available. It's not a given that students are doing, who are doing well in elementary school will just continue to do well, no matter what, regardless of the curriculum they're exposed to. In order to have progress, you need to have the ability to make progress. If students aren't put in the classes where they, where they are learning new material, they are stuck learning the same material over and over again. There is no way forward for progress. For me, the only time I felt really challenged in, in using all of my brain powers during the win classes, especially the math class that Winnie, Principal Winnie taught. So because of this, advanced coursework in, in Kennedy, in middle school is a must have. I don't feel that I will get a sufficient education if I don't have the ability to keep pushing and testing myself. Recently, on the I Ready test, I scored in the ninety-seventh percentile, not for my own grade level, but for eighth graders. The reason I know this is because I also have a severe disability and I stay, and I have to stay on top of my development because it has been so easy for me to fall, to fall behind. I have severe ADHD.
Yeah, Saoirse, I'm so sorry, but I do have to, yeah, cut you off. Thank you for honoring the time there and for sharing your experience with us. Our next speaker is Elmer Molina.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Elmer Molina y la razón por la cual estoy aquí presente es para que este, ustedes pueden hacer algo por la escuela de KIP en el respecto de que los niños ocupan este más que todo el aire acondicionado. Que muchas de las veces ellos este, las veces que yo he llegado a recoger a mis hijos, tengo dos hijos ahí, los he visto muy sofocado y este, me siento mal al verlos ya que no son solo mis hijos sino que son el resto de niños en la cual se encuentran en una situación acá en la que yo pienso que es una prioridad para que si ustedes pudieran este poner eso en número uno para la escuela KIP. Muchas gracias.
I will translate the comment. Good afternoon. My name is Elmer Molina. And the reason why I'm here in person is to ask if you could help keep school in regards to the kids do need more than anything, the air conditioning. Because many of the times the kids, when I pick up my kids, I have two kids there. I've seen them very suffocated and I feel badly about it because they're not only my kids, but also the rest of the kids. They are in a situation where I believe that that's a priority. And so that if you could please put that into like a number one priority so that KIP school can take care of that. Thank you.
Dr. Baker, yeah.
Señor, yo no sé si, si sabes que nosotros en todo el distrito vamos a tener ese aire acondicionado. Va, va a seguir a todas las escuelas, no nomás a nuestras escuelas que son, que no son charters, pero a todas las escuelas. Y van, ya empezamos a poner las máquinas en las diferentes escuelas. Esto, eso va a pasar. Sí.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking. Our next speaker, Jose Talavera.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jose Talavera. I'm the associate director, advocate for KIP. Thank you, Dr. Baker, for, for sharing that. Yeah, we have a group of parents tonight just to share their concerns around our facility. As you know, we've been working with the district around the facility master plan. And we would love for you all, I know you have the retreat on the twenty-third to talk about the facility master plan. And one thing that we would love to, for you to consider is the upgrades for the campus at North Rock's. As you can, you could hear from Elmer and we have a couple more parents also going to be sharing. AC is one of the priorities, but also parents have other priorities around the campus that they would like to see. And the facility master plan does offer different upgrades for the, for our campus that will benefit our students and families. So when you are in your retreat in the twenty-third, I hope that you can consider Keep Excellencia as one of the schools that will be able to, to receive this upgrade soon. So our families and students can have a better campus. Also, I want to take this opportunity. I sent an email to many of you about a planting, an exciting planting we're going to have on Monday through Canopé in a partnership with Connect Public Schools. So if you are free on Monday, four P M. And this also goes to the district staff. If you're free and you want to come, please do. It would be awesome to have you there and we would love to show you also the students, the students' work through this planting. So if you're available, please join us. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jose. And I believe the retreat that you're referring to is actually an open session, study session. Yeah, so it's a, it's an open meeting, study session. Yeah. Okay, our next speaker is Carmen Flores.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Carmen. Soy una mamá de dos niñas de KIP Excelencia. Me gustaría que escojan aquí Excelencia como una de las escuelas más master plan del facilites. Porque a veces cuando yo voy a recoger a mis hijas, ellas me dicen, ahorita mayormente viene el calor, el agua está un poquito muy, no sé, ellas dicen que lo sienten un poco como a, a sucio. Entonces necesito que apoyen también a KIP Excelencia con fondos porque pues, como todas las escuelas, los niños también, tanto como mis hijos y tanto como más niños, o sea, hay muchos niños en la KIP Excelencia. Entonces yo pues quiero que este apoyen a KIP Excelencia y no lo dejan fuera de lo que es el, lo que pues la ayuda que, que van a dar. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is Carmen. I am a mom of two girls at KIP Excelencia. And I would like it if you could choose KIP Excelencia as one of the schools of, as part of the master plan facilities because when I pick them up, sometimes they tell me that mainly the hot is coming, the heat and the water, they say, they feel the water is a little bit like dirty. And so I feel like if you could support KIP Excelencia with budget, part of the budget. So just like any other schools, other kids and my kids, there are a lot of kids at KIP Excelencia. And so that's why I would love it if you could support KIP Excelencia. Don't leave it out of the, the support that you will give soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carmen. Our next speaker is Juan Bale.
Sí, buenas tardes. Gracias por esta oportunidad y gracias por ustedes que tienen la información, educación suficiente y se entiendo también que cada escuela tiene su plan de mejorar. Y le felicito a Hoover que ya está mejor y me gustaría también que la considera aquí Excelencia. Y como ya dijeron los compañeros, el problema de la, del, del salón, qué bueno que ya la van a arreglar y de la área de los playground también, que hay quejas de mis niñas, pero pues, uno es como papá, uno hace lo mejor en la casa, pero ya de la escuela pues es ustedes, son los encargados que saben y tiene mejores arquitectos quien puede modificar lo que la necesidad y también como lo poquito le entendí de los estudiantes que están acá necesita mejorar de la, para que los niños tengan un mejor estudio para llegar al siguiente nivel. Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you, thank you all of you for, because you are the ones that have the information and enough education. I understand that each school has a plan to improve. So I want to congratulate Hoover that is better. And I would love it if you could also consider KIP Excelencia. Just like the other, my peers said, the challenges in the classroom, I'm glad that you're going to fix it. And the area of the playground area also, there are complaints from my daughters, but us as parents, we do our best at home. But in regards to school, you're the ones in charge, the ones that know and have better architects who can modify the needs. And also the little I understood from the students here, I know that we also need to improve so the kids have better studies to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, I think it's Chris Terry.
Hi, I'm a parent of a first grader at Orion and also an incoming kindergartner. And just first, I want to say thank you to all the trustees for being here and for giving so much of your time and, and your life to make our school district happen. I really appreciate that. It shows you guys have a lot of heart. So the way I think of a public school is a public school is something that should level the playing field for all the students who come into that. And I want to say, I think this district does a really good job of that. We have not one, but actually two language immersion programs. We have a fantastic ESL program. We have North Star. We have lots of support for kids who have IEPs. You guys, you do an amazing job and you do it on a shoestring budget. So thank you for that. What I'm here to talk about though, in particular, is advanced, advanced classes. Like, how do we deal with the kids who are capable of more advanced coursework at a younger age? So one thing we have, which I think is really good, is North Star. Parents who get into that program whose kids do well on the test in second grade, you know, and any second grader can do poorly on a test. Any second grader, you know, can have a bad day. But for kids who, you know, pass the test and then who furthermore get into the lottery, we have a fantastic program that they can go through, through eighth grade, which is great. For kids who either aren't in our district or who maybe have a bad day in second grade or for who they don't get into the lottery, you know, they don't get, go to North Star. The question is, what are the options for them? And I think at a lot of the elementary schools, we do fairly well. We have the wind blocks. We have the two language immersion programs. We have many ways for them to be challenged. But once we get to middle school, those kids, unless they're going to Clifford, they're going to all end up at Kennedy. So the question is, what can we do to support those kids who are a little bit more advanced and who maybe who, and you know, another reason they might not go to North Star is maybe their parents don't choose to take, put them there because they would rather have them be in, you know, rather than being in a school for the gifted, they want them to be in a school for everybody. That's something a lot of us do value. So the question is, what do we do when they get to Kennedy? And one thing we can do in order to help parents, to support them in that decision to go to Kennedy is to provide as many advanced classes as the kids are ready for. And again, this is about leveling the playing field. Because one thing that I have to tell you is that a lot of parents who might not choose to go to North Star, they might choose to keep their kids in Orion or in whatever school. But what they do is they will take them and they will put them in tutoring. The number of kids that I see in my child's class who are in tutoring that the parents are paying, you know, hundreds of dollars a month for is, is just absolutely incredible. So not all kids can afford that. So when you get to Kennedy, what I would like to see is every child to have the same opportunity to have the advanced classes that maybe their peers have been doing because their parents are funding it to the tune of a hundred, two hundred. In the case of some after school programs, seven hundred dollars a month is what these parents are already paying. So let's pay, so let's go to Kennedy. Let's let them have the chance to have advanced math, to have advanced English, to have whatever it is that might be helpful for them. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate hearing your comments. Went online, let me find. All right, on Zoom, I believe we have Pam Barish.
I'm here, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Good evening, Dr. Baker, district employees, community members and school board members. Some of you had the pleasure of seeing me in my classroom the week before spring break. For the rest of you, a bit of introduction. My name is Pam Barish, Mrs. B. And I have been a kindergarten teacher in room one at Henry Ford for twenty-three years. I have been an employee of RCSD for twenty-eight years and wait for it. I have taught kindergarten and only kindergarten for thirty-four years. I love what I do and I only speak up when I am really concerned and that is why I'm speaking tonight. I want to bring two things to your attention. The first was sent to you in an email last week. Thank you, David Lee, for responding to me. Are you familiar with Mum and Chance? Mum and Chance was founded in nineteen seventy-two and is a Swiss mask theater troupe who perform in a surreal mask and prop oriented style. The group became popular for its play with bizarre masks for, and forms specifically large tubular attachments. I bring this up because it is exactly what came to mind when my staff saw the air conditioning units you installed last week at Ford. The enormous white tubes coming out of the units and our windows are exactly like something used on a theatrical stage. Here's the thing. Mum and Chance is a live theater experience on stage. We are classrooms meant to be conducive to learning. Huge boxes the size of the top of my refrigerator at home with tubes the size of something you might see on a stage that make an ungodly amount of noise turn our classrooms into theater, not a space for learning. They are disrupting our environments and in some cases blocking sinks, cabinets and the big screen monitors that we use and are creating a possible workers comp injury situation for teachers when they need to climb on furniture to get to the second set of windows necessary to put the tubing out. This is not conducive to a classroom. I ask you if we are live theater meant for entertainment or education at its best. You all voted for these Band-Aids. I invite you to come out to any of the schools that got them over spring break and ask yourself if your child could learn with this apparatus in the classroom or if you would put it in your house to cool it. There has been, there has to be a better Band-Aid that is suitable and conducive for classrooms and learning. The mark was definitely missed here. You were trying to do us and our students a favor, but you neglected to ask the actual teachers if they were the right Band-Aid for the situation. The other thing I would like to bring to your attention is that for the first time in many years, kindergarten teachers will not be given the time and ability to assess our kids at the beginning of the school year next year. For years, we have been able to take minimum days for the first ten days of school to get to know our youngest learners. These days have been taken away from us and you have scheduled goal setting conferences for the end of September. I will finish this on another speaker's card another time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs., thank you, Mrs. B. And also for sharing the pictures of the air conditioning units.
So Rick.
Rick, I, I know you sent out a communication. Do you want to just briefly give an update?
Yeah, so as she said, these were temporary measures put in and we're still working with the contractors, our bond program managers to, I'll say properly install them in the best locations possible in the classrooms. We'll be working with our HVAC contractors that are brought on board for our summer HVAC projects to have a more permanent usable temporary venting and usage of these units as we work to give in permanent HVAC in all classrooms in the district.
So I was at Henry Ford, no, no, no. Scott, my screws. That was Henry Ford. I was at Orion today, so I did see one. There's one in the staff room. They are large, they are large. They do, there is going to be some piping that's going to go outside, but it's not going to go outside like was depicted in the picture that we saw earlier. So there's, we're still working on that. Remember, these are nine hundred square feet that we have to cool. So we're not going to be able to put one of those little guys that goes into the window and it's going to make everybody nice and cool and happy during the springtime and during the summer. So I, So I, I hope that people will give us grace and move forward. Let us move forward with this and let it work. I have to say. Surprise.
All right. Well, thank you for all our speakers. Several topics shared with the board. So appreciate everyone taking the time to come and speak with us. Yeah, maybe we can. May, are you, are you trying to speak? We can, we can take one more speaker.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. All right. We'll start the timer.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Baker, School Board Trustees, and Principal Leonardo. Thanks for taking the time to hear comments from the community this evening. My name is May and I have a daughter in Orion Elementary in third grade. I'm a professional mathematician, a graduate of public schools in California, and the daughter of a public school math educator. I'm here because I care deeply about the next generation of problem solvers and leaders who will tackle complex global challenges. I would like to advocate for policy changes that offer increased access to advanced curriculum at the middle school level. From an equity perspective, accelerated programs play a vital role in addressing educational disparities. Without advanced programs, families with financial means will seek enrichment opportunities outside the public school system. While those without resources cannot. Students who lack access to advanced classes in middle school. May not be able to take AP or IB courses later in high school. And when only the children of families with financial resources are gaining preparation. For degrees and jobs of the future, public education is failing in a primary duty. The differentiated courses in public schools help level this playing field, as discussed by a previous speaker. By providing advanced educational opportunities to high ability students regardless of their socioeconomic background. It ensures that all students, including underrepresented students and those often described as at promise. Have their potential recognized and nurtured. Rather than eliminate the advanced courses, we should be applying thoughtfulness in how to design these courses. Increase access to them and enable more students the opportunity to grow, achieve, and excel. Thank you very much for taking my comments.
Thank you, May. And that brings us to the end of our open public comment section. And so then we will move on to our discussion item, which is 9.1, the Board of Trustees' graduation and promotion assignments for the 24, 25 school year. Unless you have anything to say, I think we can just start our discussion and we all have the schedule. I know there's one person with a conflict and we'll be out of town. Is anybody else unavailable during this time? Okay. And next question, did it, was anybody, did anybody want to change their current assignments? And in case it wasn't clear, we need to pick up three more because one trustee won't be in town. I have a couple of suggestions, but it was based around just assuming that everybody was going to keep their current assignments. Okay, so let's go through the three, the three graduations are going to be Cloud on June 5th at 6:00 PM. Taft on June 6th at 9:00 AM and Kennedy Middle School on the 6th at 6:00 PM. And so for Cloud on the 5th, I could take it. I could have their ride after Roosevelt. I might be a little late or I could attend Roosevelt and leave a little bit early. It should be a quick graduation. It's very close. I'm absolutely happy, happy to do that. Cloud is an eighth grade one, so this is a graduation. Our fifth graders are promotions. So this will be a last time to celebrate the eighth graders before they move on to the next school district. Cecilia could also take it, but she'd be coming from Hoover, which is kind of far to be able to guarantee and like right at the time where traffic is kind of bad. David Lee, you and I are actually kind of in the same situation just before that. I'm at Roosevelt, you're at, I forget, Clifford. Yeah. So we're like equidistant. And Jen, you can't do it. You're, you're out of the question. Yeah, you're, you're over at MIT already. So I'd say, David, it's between you and me. I'm, I mean, I'm happy to take it unless you were, I would say stay, no, no, Clifford's not. Yeah, okay. So we're in the exact same situation. I mean, but I'm happy to take it.
How long do these typically go for?
Forty-five minutes.
Yeah, forty-five minutes.
It's going to be close for either one of us.
Yeah, it's going to be close for either one of us. Why don't I just take it and I can, I can run over. I've done the cadence before, so I kind of know like how the gist of what's going to be happening. So, okay. Okay, so now the next day, actually, David Lee and I are both totally free the next day if we wanted to. For Taft, I think, you know, Cecilia and Jen have hard conflicts. So David, it's you or me. Okay. Great. Yeah, Taft will be a good one. And then. Last year at Taft, every student said what they wanted to be when they grew up, as they came up. It was really neat to hear all the different like careers and aspirations that the kids had. Okay, so then we have Kennedy Middle School at 6:00 PM. And let me see, I already did the math for this. Any of us, actually, we're all free at 6:00 PM. So. I mean, I'll offer myself. I'm happy to do it. But if anybody wanted to go to the middle school one, it's one of the larger graduations. It's probably the largest graduation. So, and it fills. There's a bunch of people out there watching it and a lot of celebration and noise and stuff that goes on. So it's pretty fun. All right, Cecilia, it's you. Okay. Did you get all the changes?
Yes.
Okay.
Mike at Cloud, trustee Lee at Taft, and trustee Marquesa at Kennedy.
Any, any other changes?
My formal gratitude to all of you. Sorry, I have a pre-booked conference overlapping that.
We're a team. We, you know, we, we work as a team and we make sure things get done.
Try and get you back.
All right. Anything else to discuss? I think we got through that pretty quickly. Okay. Cool. Then we can move on to the consent agenda. We'll approve the consent items in one motion. Can I get a motion to approve them?
Move to approve the consent items.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Great. Okay, now we'll move on to action items. And this is the approval of the school plans for student achievement, the SIPSS. And this is for Orion, Henry Ford, Taft, and Garfield Elementary School.
You guys have received some updates that we haven't updated into the system. So we'll be updating some new information as well. But these were currently approved by all of the, the school site councils already. And so these are the first of the four. But we will be updating the information that I shared with you guys on the attendance rate that we're adding, that I sent out. So those are just currently, we're waiting in the process for that to be. And once that is done, then we'll upload those and share those with you. But all that information has been shared with principals and have, that was information they shared with their school site councils already. But just want to make sure that we can approve these first four and then the next round will be coming at the next meeting.
Before we take action on it, do any, does anyone have questions or comments that they'd like to ask? Jen? Mike?
I know we get the school reports annually, but do we see any other progress reports against the SIPSS for the schools?
You're saying during the, their school year? We haven't typically, but usually do those when we do the board presentations. That's usually when they, when schools report out. That's how they will share their information.
Do we have access to the other school site council meeting notes and stuff? I know at the school site councils, they.
Oh, this meeting notes from each school site council. Those would be on, they would be on the, on their own agenda items, probably that they're posted. Wherever the schools post them.
Are you asking for those agenda items that are at each of the other school site councils when they go?
You can access them because I know at the site councils, they do review kind of their progress towards their SIPSS.
Sure, we can, we can do that. We have no problem getting the information or the slide decks that are presented at that time at the school sites. I just need to make myself a note so that they can do it.
And, and yeah, because they do update them periodically, whatever information, whatever. So that's the one thing. It's ongoing because it's throughout the year. So they may be doing surveys and they're updating those surveys with their, so that would be in, some, some principals have an ongoing document where they just keep adding. But yeah, we could definitely ask them to share those.
Just a clarification of my understanding. So these are kind of the initial cut, but then they're going to be updates that happened. For example, with, once we have the CASP scores, then that's going to change things. And then that, we're kind of approving this anyway, but then those will be updated kind of without further action by the board. Is that?
Correct. Those are updated just yearly because it's whenever we get it. But the school site councils see all that data at their school site council meeting. So when the, those scores come in and they're public, we're allowed to show them to the public. Then that's when the school site councils typically in the fall will go over all that data with their schools. The principals meet with their teachers and then they bring it up. They show, show it at school site council. So that's where that information becomes part of it. But in the SIPSS itself, we don't update it because it's yearly. So it'll go into our yearly update for next year.
Okay. Is there, is there, will there, I get kind of to Jen's point. Will we be able to, how will we know what to look for?
We, we do a presentation. So Jenny, once we have all the CASP information, Jenny will then share the district data. On the CASP, the CASP scores as a district wide.
Got it. Okay.
That will be in the fall.
Okay. I think broadly, and I know we've had communications about this. I think it'd be helpful just to make sure that we have clarity on what the school specific goals are. And especially how they align to the LCAP goals. That'll help, I think, at least, me at least. I just track the progress and make sure that they're all tied together. But I don't think that's a, that sounds like that's already in place, but just want to put that out there. The only other question I had was the SIPSS, are these going to be uploaded to the website as well?
Not this version. So what we'll do is we make, want to make sure that all the DTS, that the slide deck that I shared. That that is updated in DTS. That's in progress right now. They haven't, once that's updated, then we'll upload the new one with all the correct information.
Okay, cool.
But for the other, all the other sites, we're hoping all of that will be ready to go on the, when they come to get ratified.
Thank you.
Or approved. Any other questions?
Questions? No, you know, I just want to acknowledge the school leaders, the staff, the families, you know, who contributed to the SIPSS. You know, they're thoughtful. They're, they're data driven. I do agree with trustee Lee that it's really important that we get the SIPSS and the LCAP data metrics kind of aligned. So that we all are talking the same language from the board to the, you know, to the district administration, to site administrators and hopefully families. I think that's important. But I'm grateful for the work. And, you know, I also want to reflect that, you know, we're not, you know, the district's not standing still. And we've seen some really major shifts in the last year that I just wanted to, I think deserve recognition and reading through the SIPSS kind of reminded me of that. The new math curriculum, we're in our second year of that. You know, that's laying a foundation for better outcomes. The district adopted ELD curriculum. I don't know if that's the first time it's been done.
For a long.
For a long time, first time. Yeah. And then the professional development that came along with it. Getting TCM and focusing on grades three through five. That was great. On the leadership team, you know, you're, you're, you're spending time in classrooms. You know, walk around management kind of thing and modeling right alongside principals. That's a, you know, cultural reset and I think we should really be proud of that. And, you know, we're beginning to ensure that students aren't walking into state tests cold, you know, or the LPAC cold. And, you know, not, not teaching to the test, but, but preparing them so that they, they know what, what, you know, showing them what the, let them have the opportunity to really show what they want to know. But, you know, the SIPSS, you know, we do, do need to have clarity here, right? Because despite all this good work, you know, we're still seeing patterns that should kind of alarm us. You know, across all four of these SIPSS, long-term English learners remain a major issue. And that's true even at Orion where, you know, a hundred percent of the fifth grade ELs were LTEls. And that was just, that was kind of, that was kind of surprising to me. You know, math and ELA proficiency rates, particularly VLS and students with disabilities, they're still, I mean, they're still in the single digits at some of the schools. And NPSS and SEL supports are really growing. But your chronic absenteeism still remains high. We're making progress. We're definitely seeing that one come down. And we hear it at all the school reports, just how much intense effort is being put in there. But it's something that we have to watch about it. You know, we do, reading through the SIPSS, it sort of highlighted that. The difference in amount of resources at different schools. And, you know, are we really making sure that schools are, that we're really, you know. We, we talk about really wanting to make sure that we're equity focused on resource and funding, but are we doing the right thing? That we're stepping back and measuring that and putting that stuff in there. So, you know, it's like, I want to celebrate the changes that are underway. And I think we should celebrate the changes that are underway, but we need to leverage them. To really make sure that we can get everything to go further. One thing that I was kind of looking around for, I was kept thinking as we were reading this, like, man, we need a strategy for long-term English learners. Like, we really need to have a strategic plan for, turns out we do.
We do.
There's one, yeah, Google, Google found it for me. I actually think it was reviewed in the TMA recently because Google found those notes for me too. And. And so, yeah, it found it for me. It looked like it had been reviewed annually by the board until 2019. Like the fall of 2019, we all know what happened in the winter of 2020. And said that, but it looked, you know, I didn't read the whole thing, but I thought, you know, wish and all of a sudden you will find, right? So that, that might be something that's worth coming back and reevaluating. It's like, what are we really going to do? How are we going to make the strategic shift to be able to go there? So that was kind of cool. Look, we're turning a corner. It's awesome. So we just need to, you know, keep going ahead with urgency. So I appreciated the SIPSS and sort of other alignment that's going on.
Wait, can I just ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
For both Jennifer and David Lee. So when you're looking at the data and you look, you want to find how we analyze it more so than what you just hear when you get that board report. So what you're looking for is what they're doing at the school sites and how Anna presented, how Anna spoke previously was. That they do this often at the school sites. And I know those of you that are at school sites and on school site council. Know that the principals go through the data sometimes every other month, depending on their meetings. And depending on what they're focusing on. So you want to see the agenda item along with the discussion, along with the slides that went with it. Yeah, yeah. And at other sites, what you'll see is you'll see, you will see. A data sheet where it has, you know, students that it doesn't have their names on it because they're sharing it with parents and stuff like, and you'll see what's going on. Is that something that, if that site does something like that, you want to see?
I think it'd be good to see it at a more regular cadence than once, once a year when the schools come to the board, right? And share kind of a data dump with us.
Got it.
Yeah, I think that's the same with my view. I don't, I don't have a specific view. And I'm not trying to create any more work for people other than like whatever's there. I'm happy to just kind of take a look for the same reason of. From a government's perspective, I think it's very helpful to just get a sense of like where we are, just got checks here and there. So, and I don't know what's presented, but. Not, not more work, just more like sharing.
Because we're also asking for data when we meet with them. And so how they present their data to us may be a bit different in how they're presenting it to their parent group. Because we ask every time we're out there with, meeting with principals. As we go through our rounds, we're asking for data and next steps and challenges. Get a lot with challenges, believe me. But we have that. We, we get that on a regular basis.
That might be sufficient for what I would be looking for. If I, I don't know if that's sure, easily shareable.
Right. I just need to make sure that there's no kids' names on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, we can look for a motion to approve these four SIPSS. It's an action item. Yeah, it is. Can I get a motion to approve them?
I'll move to approve these four SIPSS.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're on to board and superintendent reports. Who would like to start first?
I will start because I don't have anything.
I was a chaperone.
I was a chaperone for the fourth grade Orion field trip. The only male chaperone was thirteen fourth grade boys overnight, which was exciting. Everyone survived. Some people even got some sleep. We learned a lot about the history of California, including the Milwaukee, which we were performing.
I went to visit Ford, just typical site trip. Few notes that I took down that I think other trustees have also noticed. Consistent theme, IEPs are taking up a lot of time. Just that's a thing that I think a lot of schools are dealing with. But it sounded like the district is, you know, being mindful and supportive. So it's a plus for that. I did have a conversation with the STEAM teacher who was very impassioned just about making sure that the district continues to support that as a priority. Obviously, we are working with limited resources, but you know, wanted to call out that that is something that seems to be valuable. Transportation, again, very grateful that that is a problem that was quickly identified and the district is working to solve. Obviously, FASR is better, but like great that that's something that's being given attention. And then more just generally, I saw a lot of engagement in many different forms among the students and the staff like and with each other. So that was great to see. So it's good to have like a very tangibly healthy environment. And then I got to walk around with the two Jennifers and I was just particularly impressed with their dedication to coaching. So we'd walk around and lots of positive things. But then like immediately, it's like, okay, here's the things that I think we should talk about next, which was, it was great and healthy, right? It was, it wasn't like, oh, this is wrong. What is just like, how do we keep on improving? So I was just very impressed with that mindset. So I'm very grateful that we have school leaders that are taking that mindset. Separately, Mike and I were at the first and Dr. Baker at the first parcel tax plan, district measure planning session. It was more just about process as an introduction. And then that's all I have.
Mike and I were at career day at Kennedy last week. Bless you. Right before spring break, they had a lot going on that day there. The community school coordinator Cynthia did a really good job. I was well organized. I liked the variety of kind of careers that were being exposed for the kids were being exposed to. I don't know if the other eighth grade. Schools are kind of doing something like that.
I not this year, not this year. How it started was last year when B Williams was there and she brought that forward and Cynthia did a great job also during that period. And I know that B was trying to get it organized at her school, but she has a brand new. Person in that position at her site. So she figured she'll go next year. But she started that last year when she started with us. She actually did. The career portion for the girls and it was done at Red Morton. And then the other VP, who is now working in a different district. What's his name? The one that went to South City. Jared, Jared, he did for the boys there at Kennedy. So, yeah, so great to hear. I didn't get to make it that.
And Dr. Rodriguez hosted us and her Mandarin is quite good. Side note. Yeah, she 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 just walked us around. And then right after that, I went to the Orion Field Day. It was nice to walk around, actually leave the campus and have the kids walk the loop around school. It felt safe and traffic was okay.
Good.
Yeah, I got covered for those who are on, but it was neat. It was neat to meet Dr. Rodriguez because I think she just started this year. It's nice to get to spend some time walking around. And Richie was there. He was presenting for colonial, yeah, our careers and colonial careers. So that's fun.
Again, with the proposal of the parcel tax, that that meeting. And then I had a meeting today with Orion and regarding it moving forward. So something will be coming to you the next board meeting. I think we are on our way. A lot of discussion and so forth, but. I'll bring the information to you on the May fourteenth.
Twelfth?
Fourteenth. Okay, fourteenth. Okay, perfect. That's our perfect. So we'll hear.
Great. All right, moving on. For information, we have the quarterly Williams report for the third quarter. This is January through March. Anyone have questions on it? There are no reports. Okay. Unlike this previous. Correspondence. I'll just call it the ones I know about. We had the. Email that they discussed as public comment for the accelerated learning policy revisions. I received just some media requests, but these were in response to public comments. Jorge responded to it since we hadn't discussed them as a board. I didn't want to discuss.
I'll just add on the first topic on the advanced course request. I think we also received an email. From PTO president for from Kennedy, just responding that there's other groups that have different sets of priorities, something. So. Something that the board, I'm sure, is weighing in consideration of their overall question.
All right, other business and suggested items for future agenda. I wanted to ask about two from things that we had started, I think, in the fall that talking about, but or even last year, but that. I know the dyslexia screener decision is coming up.
It's coming. It's coming. And the next meeting is.
It's been already. We're gonna, we're gonna prepare to present in May.
In May, okay. And that because that needs to be selected by the end of the year, right?
Yeah, so it's been selected. We just have to do the presentation and then get part of food.
All right, awesome. And then the cell phone policy was.
Correct. Yeah, right. That's the next one that needs to be worked on and that has to be worked on. I have all the information that I received from the consultants that were working with the county office of education and what that's going to take. And I'm going to. Probably do this one a bit differently because I'm going to do an English component. I'm going to do a Spanish component. The Spanish, I'm going to ask colleague over here to help me out with that. We have like our normal Spanish advisory group, but I'm. This group is going to be larger than that normally and so that we can get through this and have it done hopefully by the end of this school year. So there's two pathways. I'm going to talk to Wendy when she comes back, the English and the Spanish and the both will merge.
And the requirements to have it done by the end of next school year, but we want to get it in place now. Great. Those were the two.
We've obviously heard a lot of commentary about acceleration and, you know, had some comments on both sides of that. There's clearly some nuance here. I'm wondering like. Would it be appropriate for us to have a study session on on that? Do we want to refer it to policy committee to go and have a discussion about what we would like? Yeah, if we want changes or not to the board's policy on acceleration.
Well, first, well, that's one of the, I think, the questions right now that came from this group is to look at the policy. So it would go to policy committee first. And then we can give policy committee the information and the data that we have garnered so far.
I think that makes sense for the certain policy committee. How about you?
I agree. The only thing, and I have mentioned this before, I think it'd be helpful to get a fuller set of the research, kind of. Really understand the issue. I know that there's selected research has been provided. I think there are other sides, so it'd be good to have the full.
The gardener center is looking for me as I. And then they'll get it, analyze it and give us some.
Yeah, and I I trust that the members of the policy committee will be looking for that kind of data. She definitely asked for it as well if, yeah, because I think he's thinking about it as well. I think we're on to, I'm guessing it's adjournment, but I can't remember. I don't know. We did a board meeting calendar, no changes to the calendar. We're going to move on to adjournment. Can I get a motion to?
I move adjourn.
And second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Eight oh two. Haven't been to one of those in a long time.